The allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. With us tonight, we have our Director of Finance, Mark Medler, Assistant City Manager, Chris Weinich, Clerk of Council, Misty Clark, City Manager, Dave Kennedy, our Acting City Solicitor, Jeffrey Adam Levine. About that, Chief of Police, Michael Gabrielson. We also have our Director of Human Resources, Julie Robinson, former council members, Todd Osborne and Kent Blair, and several esteemed members of our police department. I think that is everyone. So welcome, everyone. Start, Chief. What? What are we gonna do with Ted? No, no, he's good, because he's here. You're all flustered now.
I think it was that middle name drop. It's ordered by Ted.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city staff, members of the public. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of recognizing one of our own, Officer Vicky Johnson, with me for her five years of dedicated service with the Loveland Police Department. Officer Johnson currently serves as a School Resource Officer at St. Columban School, where she is a trusted and familiar presence to students, staff, and families. Her daily commitment to maintain a safe, welcoming, and secure environment has not gone unnoticed. In fact, earlier this year, Officer Johnson was selected as a 2025 recipient of the Claremont Chamber of Commerce Foundation's Excellence in Service Award, an honor made even more meaningful by the fact that she was nominated by a parent of a St. Columban student. This recognition speaks volumes about the relationship she builds and the trust she fosters in our community. Officer Johnson began her law enforcement journey in 2003. Is that correct? Okay, 2003, with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Initially serving in Corrections, she was later promoted to Road Patrol in 2006, where she spent 14 years of active service. During that time, she distinguished herself as a field training officer and a dedicated member of the Honor Guard, mentoring new deputies and representing her department with honor and professionalism. In 2020, fortunately for us, she decided to join the Loveland Police Department, where she continued to exemplify excellence in every aspect of her role. Beyond her current work as an SRO, Officer Johnson is a certified crash reconstructionist, something I did not know, and was one of the select group of female officers from across the country chosen to attend advanced tactical training in Texas, all a testament to her skill, professionalism, and commitment to continued improvement. Outside of her service, Vicky is a passionate supporter of Alabama women's softball. Anything you'd like to say there?
Roll tide.
And enjoys spending time with her family, friends, and her four pets. Officer Johnson, your service, dedication, and genuine care for this community are truly commendable. On behalf of the City of Loveland, the Loveland Police Department, all of the officers and command staff, we thank you for your commitment to our city, our schools, and our residents. Congratulations on five years with LPD. We look forward to many more. Congratulations.
I remember when you got here. So I don't know if that means I've been around too long or what, but it seems like it's flown. But we always talk about how much council in our community appreciate our police department, and you are an integral part of that. And we think it was certainly the Hamilton County's loss in our game when you chose to join us on the Loveland family. So we're very proud to have you as part of our department. Congratulations on your five years.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and work for the city. It is the type of work that I love, and I always feel supported in many ways, especially when my mother died with people that reached out. That would have never happened if other agencies. It made me feel like I knew I was at home. And for my family for supporting me. And again, I'm just at all being here, and I can't wait to see what the future holds.
The Wizard of Oz, I mean. He's behind the curtain.
They're calling the Wizard of Oz.
I can be a little.
Yeah, exactly.
I can be tough.
I can be hot. But it was just, I got there a little late going down on the west side of the road. So it was just like, then again, at like 9:30.
Look at that.
Get up.
My face is all sweaty. I go like, okay, well, that is a lot.
Okay, open forum. Kaia Bergen.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I'm Kaia Bergen, the Loveland Branch Manager at the library. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who supported our quilt show back in May. Having you there, Councilman Hart, was great. And also, former Councilman Blair building the quilt hanger that we got to give to the top favorite. With that, we do have a Facebook page if you want to follow us at the Loveland Branch Library on Facebook. And now that the quilt show is over, we're kicking it into even higher gear with summer reading that started the day of the last day of the quilt show, so May 31st. And then we did summer reading starting. So we've just been in overdrive the whole time. And it's been great because we've signed up even more kids this summer so far in the first three weeks. So I hope to see you guys this summer.
Thank you, Kaia. Okay, next we have review and approval of minutes from the June 10th, 2025 meeting. Are there any changes or additions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, we have a second reading of an ordinance. Why don't you go ahead and read the ordinance?
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to grant an easement to Kelly W. Cox.
Thank you. Were there any further discussion on this ordinance? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Ordinance 59 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, we have another second reading. I'll go ahead and read that one.
Ordinance transferring real property on East Loveland located in the city of Loveland, Claremont County, Ohio, to the Community Improvement Corporation of Loveland.
Thank you. Any further conversation regarding that ordinance? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Abstain on basis of my business.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Motion carries, excuse me, ordinance 60 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy?
The city was requested by Patriot Engineering to permission to put monitoring wells in Bishop Park, which is, everyone knows, is down at Riverside Drive along Colonel Thomas Paxton Bridge. This is related to a pending sale of 401 West Loveland. As is city's tradition with easements, we treat that as any giving, any right or use of our property. So with that, going through the standard process, I would request city council have a public hearing for July 8th.
All right, any comments or questions? Mr. Hart.
That monitoring well, just from an aesthetic standpoint down there at Bishop Park, we're talking about something fairly minor.
Yeah, it'll be two of them. We had one in the front of City Hall for the mobile station for, gosh, it was here before I got here, many, many years. They typically do stay in a long time. Look a little like a manhole with a bit of something. Chris, you probably best describe what it.
Even smaller than that. It's only about six inch diameter.
Yeah.
So.
Pretty small.
Very good.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, we need, someone care to make a motion? Do I really have to spell it out?
I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for the July 8th, 2025 City Council meeting to garner public input on granting an easement on city-owned property. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy?
So as the city council is aware, we council decided to take on the responsibility of the Hillwagner Cemetery, actually Eagle Scout back in 2021. Full transparency, I was not aware of the cemetery prior to John E. Hall coming to the city and asking if he could restore the cemetery. We quickly realized, did a very basic research and realized that the cemetery actually had no owner. It just said cemetery. So the city council then decided that it was in our best interest, given the proximity, the relation of the burials in there, of which there was over 100, including some pretty significant local city leaders, war, union soldiers, and so on and so forth, that they decided it would be best for the city to move forward to assume ownership of the cemetery. They doubled down on that and actually put together a Hillwagner Cemetery Committee and appointed members. They've been sort of stuck in the mud because not only did the city not own the property, but the property technically was, not technically, the property was in Hamilton Township. City Council, we met with Hamilton Township. They were fully ready to give the city ownership of it and sort of even went a step farther and said that they would not challenge any annexation of the property. So with that, and I will say Joe Braun really did a good job, even though it took forever. At the end of the day, you're dealing with a piece of property that no one owns, and the courts had to go through quite a process to make sure that it was flushed out. So on June 5th, they warned County Court of Common, please officially transfer the property to the city. And with that, just keep moving along, we decided to go ahead and file the annexation. And that's where we're at tonight. So this is simply a motion because we did this when we annexed Oak Run Sewer Plant. We own the property, so there's no annexation petition. But we do typically get a nod of the motion from council to go ahead and begin the process for annexation of the .33 acre parcel. This parcel was granted access, not necessarily easement, as I stated, but access to State Route 48 by Joe Ferrughi. He is the developer of Blossom Hill.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? And I would just say, this has been years in the making, and I know Historic Preservation and Planning Commission has designated this as one of our historic sites. And it's our people that are buried there, individuals who are important to the history of the city. So it's nice that this is going to finally be where it's supposed to be. So well done on your tenacity in that respect. So we do need a motion.
Motion to approve.
No. We need a motion authorizing the city manager and city solicitor to take necessary actions to initiate an annexation of city-owned Hillwagner Cemetery into the city's corporation boundary.
So moved.
Thank you so much. There's a second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Is this you, Mr. Weinich?
Thank you, Mayor. On June 18th, Loveland Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the request to amend the zoning map for three parcels owned by Cardinal Land Conservancy. The request was for the amendment from residential low density to agricultural. At the conclusion of that public hearing, planning and zoning formally recommended in favor of the proposed zoning map amendment for those three parcels. This is the transmittal from that commission to council. And at this point, we're asking if council so wishes to have a public hearing scheduled for July 22nd to hear this map amendment.
All right, any comment, questions? All right, so you need motion to schedule a public hearing on or about July 22nd, 7:00 PM, to hear the proposed zoning map amendment for the parcels listed in this letter, correct?
That is correct.
Can we have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps. Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, do we have? Yes, we do. Mr. Kennedy?
So Chris and I are just going to go through these real quick. This is city council's June 24th, 2025 update on their 2024-25 goals under Development Plan for the two blocks of West Loveland. That plan was completed. Chris and I did a review of it and asked the traffic engineer to give us a little more details. There's some big items in this traffic. Again, this is the stretch of property along West Loveland from Love and Madeira Road through to Second Street. And we actually do anticipate, Chris and I are going to have Ed from TEC come make a formal presentation to council. Likely be at the second meeting in July. Under Development Downtown Streetscape Plan, the city submitted a request for Phase 1 through ODOT. We anticipate hearing any day on whether or not that was funded. That would be the West Loveland and portions of Carl Brown under the Commerce Park. This was a big move and a lot of work by Eva Wisby. Kenwood Dealer Group is going to sort of mimic what Keith McCluskey has been doing in moving what is basically their second headquarters into the city. This is a significant number of jobs that will be coming into our Commerce Park and fully really is dead on what that goal is. Eva had a lot of tenacity with this and did that. So they actually bought two parcels, one vacant, one building, and are renovating that property. So that is really a big step for the city and a great use for that building. Eva did a great job. Under the Sidewalk Connectivity Plan, we should be hearing any day whether or not the city's submission for a Safe Routes to School grant from ODOT will be funded. That is really big if that is funded because they will assist to work with the school district to prepare a Safe Routes to School plan. Once the plan is written and prepared and approved by council, the city would be eligible for up to $500,000 for sidewalk improvements for a five-year period. That's pretty significant when you consider the plan that council recently reviewed in Claremont County and the way the schools are located within the city of Loveland. Those sidewalks, we'd have a lot of projects that would be eligible through sidewalks. With that one other sidewalk project, the city completed the O Sage sidewalks funded through the CDBG grant. Last one before Chris takes over is under Complete on Nisbet Park Improvement. The city submitted a grant to ODNR for a project that would complete the entire walking trail throughout the park. Chris is going to go over a couple of others.
Love and Madeira Road, continue advancing that Phase 3, which is from Castle Skate Land to the city limits. We are in kind of what's called the right-of-way fair market value. So the fair market values have been established, and those offers, once they are approved by ODOT, will be sent out, those offer letters to the property owners. So that's moving along very well, still on schedule. Phase 1, which includes the roundabout there at Valley View. Stage 2 plans for that project has been submitted. It was submitted on June 30th this year. And then Phase 2, which is the one that we currently do not have funded, we submitted that again for OKI grant money. We submitted that on June 6th. Our Choice One Engineering, who's doing the work for that and submitted all those proposals for us, they actually attended the workshop they had to go over the proposed projects. And this go-around actually looks a lot more favorable than the last go-around. If you remember, we failed, I believe, once, if not twice, on this, twice on this, just because the amount of projects that have been in. So, but this time, there looks like fewer projects, and one of the projects is like a $300 million project, which I believe is the Western Hills Viaduct. So hopefully, that'll get pulled out of this funding, and they'll find a potentially a different mechanism to fund that 300 million. Which if that's the case, if you look at all the projects, the dollar amounts, we might sneak in on this one. So we're cautiously optimistic on this one. The Riverside Drive project, survey work has begun by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So they're going to get their survey done and then start beginning the design work on that. And then PFAS, our general plan has been approved by the HOEPA, which is fantastic news. That allowed us to feel good about the possibility for the Principal Forgiveness Grant for the design. We received what's called the Project Management Plan in draft form. It is out in draft form for one month, which is a public comment period. And at the end of that public comment period, they will release the grants. And we are nominated for that, which is a huge step. So it would be 100% of the design that would be funded. I will have a firm update on that in July sometime, but that'll be a big announcement for us. So we look forward to that. And then I believe Mark has one.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So everybody loves talking about reserve policies. I know I do. So the city has had some reserve policies since basically the 90s. So since then, there's some various iterations of it. Our mission, some resolutions that need to get cleaned up and taken off. So I've been working with the Chairman of the Finance Commission, trying to get a better handle on it and some new ideas for it. And we plan to be bringing that to discussion at the next Finance Commission meeting, which is the middle of July.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding the goals? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Weinich, could you talk just a little bit, and I don't mean this question to peg you in anything specific, but like the timing on like that West Loveland to Valley View with, I mean, I know you talked about where the funding is coming at. Do you have any idea what the timeline, when you might see some actual shovels in your?
Yeah, so the first phase that'll actually be under construction will actually be Phase 3, which is from Castle Skate Land to the city limits. That will go out to bid the first quarter of 2026. So that'll be going out to bid. So you'll see construction in 2026 on that phase. Yes, yeah. And then we move in the end of 2027, that may move, it may move to 2028, specifically because, so not that, the section from, I'm sorry, the section from West Loveland to the roundabout is the end of 2027, potentially 2028. It'll be dependent on the funding from OPWC because we're going to have to go after OPWC to make up the remainder on that project. So that'll be that phase, and then Phase 2, likely not till 2030.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And is Riverside, are we thinking 27?
The Army Corps is pegging 27 right now, 2027.
That would be good timing.
It would be good timing. But we're watching that. So that's where we're playing that project along with Phase 1 of Love and Madeira because we have to go after, in consecutive years, we need to make it consecutive years for the OPWC funding for both of those projects. So we're kind of watching, but we're playing with both of them and paying attention to it and working with our designers on that because they have to come in consecutive years, however that ends up being, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, questions? All right, under City Council reports, last night, council members Ping, Goodyear, and Hart and I single-handedly pushed the new Quint fire truck into its bay. That was cool. A lot of the fire department was there, obviously the chief. They had, a lot of Boy Scouts were there doing their thing. So that was a proud moment to show off our newest Quint truck. And speaking of the fire department, it was announced this week that Chief Huber won the Allen Brunascini Fire Service Executive Safety Award, which is a national award. And I think that gets awarded in August, I believe. So maybe there's some point between now and then we can discuss that when he's here. Mr. Kennedy was at the schools right before this because Loveland City Schools recognized City Loveland for their overall contributions to our schools and exemplary service to our communities. So this was really for you and your efforts, correct?
No, they were recognized in local businesses. La Rosas was there, Lemons and Limes and TriHealth. They focused on collaboration between schools and communities. So the city got recognized. They let us sneak out early, Chris and I. But we got to say a few words about the benefit of a good school district to the community. And it was a very nice event.
Very good. This past Saturday was the Tyler Christopher and the Ralston Bell Show Band was in the park doing their Elvis tribute. It was packed. There easily was over 1,000 people that were there enjoying that. And because I announce them, people know who I am. Lots of people come up during that just to say what a great city we have. So it's a hot, but very nice event. Independence Day is our next event. There will be parking shuttles running from 12 to 11:00 PM from the Loveland High School and the Early Childhood Center. There is a kids' bike decorating contest at 1:15 at the Loveland Elementary School. Does that mean they decorate them there or they judge them at that?
They judge them before the parade.
So you should come at 1:15 with your bike decorated, okay? The parade is now at 2:00 PM. That is a change from prior years. Family activities from 3:00 to 7:00 in the park, Nisbet. Buddy badges are from 3:00 to 9:00, also Nisbet Park and Railroad Avenue. Food trucks from 3:00 to 10:00 at Nisbet in downtown. Bingo will be in City Hall, 4:00 to 7:00. Pedal pullers are at 4:00. I don't know what that is.
It's kids' tractor pull, and they use pedal tractors to do that. And if they do well, they can go on to a regional and national competition.
Oh, wow.
And that's when you say West Loveland because we're shutting down the road after the parade. So that'll be right out on West Loveland. There is a Team Spelling Bee on the Railroad Avenue stage that, Mr. Hart, because of our intellect, he and I are going to be judging that. Uncle Sam and Betsy Ross Look-Alike Contest, 6:30 on Railroad Avenue stage. From 7:00 to 10:00, a concert, Marty and the Docks, is that 80s music, 80s, at Nisbet Park Amphitheater. There will be a pie eating contest at 7:00 on the Railroad Avenue stage, and fireworks at 10:00. So quite a lineup. I know that Misty and her group, including Mr. Jarenick there, her committee have been working very hard. So I think let's just hope for good weather. Nice event. Anybody else have any other announcements? Anybody else have any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Ori?
Just a comment that Mr. Blair and I were on our way back from a walk this morning on the bike trail and came across Mr. Kennedy out there working on the new landscape. But I just wanted to comment, they was cleaning up. But just wanted to comment on how well that looks, and it's just beautiful. Applaud the public works people for putting it in. It looks great.
On both sides?
On both sides, yeah. Yeah, sweetheart, lame man here. Yeah, looks great.
Very good. True. Anything else? All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey. Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
What'd you say about that intellect? Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
So Bob, what do we do now?
Vice Mayor Phelps. And Mr. Ping.
Here.